Hey Will, here we are. We welcome all, both of you to the workshop. We hope that you guys are full of information. This workshop is for discussion of the fire district and 2025 budget. I understand Wes Bingham's ill today. And so we get to hear the whole song and dance from our chief, County, Cache County Fire Chief Rod Hammer. So we'll turn it over to you and start guiding us down the road we need to go.
Okay. I'm not entirely sure which factors of this Wes had lined out to go over, but I can kind of let you know where we're at right now in the district and some of the financial requirements that are going to be coming up. So as far as moving along the path of the district, we've got the fire district board, Board of Trustees established with the current members that were put into place last week or the last meeting. We've also made the recommendation that we expand the board to seven members. And that that'll need to be done in the future. I think that's a good decision because if we're going to have taxing authority, they need to be a broader board and have, hopefully we'll get people who are elected officials from other cities. So that'll, that'll work out well for us. I know that Wes has been working with the Utah State Tax Commission on our ability to set a mill levy to fund the district, if that's the direction we end up going totally. One of the things that I need to, that I think is important as we work through this process is if, when we start talking about mill levy numbers and what the cost of this is going to be, we can, we can look at costs of current operations by simply looking at everybody's budget. But I think that's going to be inadequate for what our needs are going to be. I think where we need to look is where are we now? What are we funding currently? Where should we be right now as a fire service and a fire protection district? And then where do we want to grow into over the next several years? And establish a funding mechanism that can handle all that. If we look at just current expenditures, I think we're going to be short sighted and not capture as much as we're going to need. And I think it'd be a disservice to set a tax levy one year and then raise it significantly the next year because we find out we need more than we're currently operating on. So that's one of my big concerns. We have met with the Mayor's Association and explained what's going on with the fire district, how we're, we're looking at this. We met yesterday with a few of the city managers at their city managers' meeting. And I, I, we've had some really good conversations. We've had some good discussions. And, and I'm not opposed to answering hard questions. Sometimes the answer's been, I don't know yet. But I think that the general consensus from, from my interpretation is yes, it's something we absolutely need to look at. Some have said, yes, we absolutely need to go this direction. Others have said, you know, we're, we're kind of doing okay ourselves. Not sure that's what we want to be into. And we'll have to just deal with that as we move along. One of the interesting things is just looking at the size and scope of everything. So there's a lot of, a lot of different sized elements and different, different ability to provide service. And when we really get down to it, we're weak in our, our response. We had a structure fire a month or so ago on a Sunday afternoon and one city could staff one engine with three people. We've had calls, we had a call a week ago in the Maple Rise area, in Mendon's area, that nobody responded. So our office calls dispatch and says, well, send Wellsville out, even though it's not their primary zone. So there's a lot of overlap and a lot of coverage from other agencies. So when people say, yeah, we can handle it, that's a little disingenuous. I think what they mean is somebody will show up, but they certainly won't have as many resources as they're going to need. As we grow out, and I'm looking at the growth projections, the Millville, Nibley, Providence area, I mean, 18,000 to 20,000 people right there, there should be a career full-time station in that area. And Nibley's paying Hiram to provide that service. But when there's a fire in Nibley, that fire's put out by Logan and Wellsville and Mendon and Hiram and Paradise. So there's a lot of unequal funding for the services being provided. And I think that's kind of the, the basis for trying to make sure that the people getting the service are paying for the service and we get some equality there. There's a lot of expenses that are, that are obviously raising with everything else. The latest bid I got on a fire engine was $470,000. That's, that's off the line. We don't spec anything. It's give me an engine with a tank that holds 1,000 gallons and a pump that'll pump 1,250 gallons a minute. And that's pretty much the spec that we ask for. And I get calls via vendors and they say, well, I can get you that engine and we're building those as demo models and it'll be 18 months out. The one I specced in 2021, which was how we used to buy engines, I said, we want this, we want all these features, we want this. And it was still a commercial unit, so it wasn't the custom that people spec. We'll see that one the end of this year, maybe next year. So we're three to four years out if we spec one and try to buy it right now. And there's, it's just an ongoing thing, you know? Do we, do we put these engines in every station? Can we afford to put an engine, a new engine in every station? Or do we have to go to a trickle-down model where some of the areas that are least used, get some of the older ones? You know, there's, there's a lot of really serious, hard discussions that are going to have to happen as these funding things go up.
Can I ask a question real quick? How many stations are there currently within that fire district boundary?
So there, there are eight stations plus. So North Logan is, is provided by Logan, so that would be nine. And then there's the county station in Hiram, which would be 10. If you look, you just look at the demographics of the valley, you've got the east side, which I compare to the Wasatch Front. You've got houses from Hiram to Smithfield. And then you've got the west side of the valley, south and north ends, that are still old Cache County volunteer model kind of places. And we're trying to balance those two organizations. One service model we've looked at is if you staff full-time, kind of a Richmond, Smithfield, Hyde Park, Nibley, Hiram, and then those guys, we, we keep the volunteer model, but then those guys can shift out during the day if there's an incident. We can, we can provide staffing for it. But we look at things globally as a county and we look at the individual cities and their ability to respond. And it's a different view than the cities take themselves. So it's kind of a weird balance thing. But the number one thing is can we provide the service to people? And that's becoming a bigger and bigger struggle all the time.
Service requirements are quite a bit higher in commercial factories, things like that. I mean, those needs are really quite, quite a bit higher. And it seems like those areas are really exploding. There's a lot of commercial expansion going on, more even than I think housing seems like.
Yeah, I, I don't know that it's disproportionate, but the, the commercial industry areas seem to be more in the more remote areas of the county. So if you look at Richmond, you know, you've got the new mill, the flour mill going up. Casper's is building on, Lowers is almost doubled in size. Or some of the others, there's, there's a bunch of them up there. And we put those two people in during the day from eight to five, but Richmond doesn't have a volunteer backup in the evening. One of the proposals I was going to make for next year's budget is to increase that staffing to a seven-day-a-week, 12-hour shift. Yeah, Sunday through Saturday, so that we've got a little bit more solid response on that north end. But I talked to the Hyde Park City Manager yesterday and, and they're looking at a lot of commercial development on the west side of the highway that once you start into commercial fire, it's a whole different level. Because now you need ladder trucks, you need just heavier equipment to try to get in and get to those things. Think of a, think of a high-rise and how hard it'd be to fight a structure fire in a high-rise. Well, a commercial building is a horizontal high-rise. So if you're going to go in 200, 300, 400 feet inside of a building that has this massive area to contain unburned fuels, then the risk gets exponentially more. I mean, you can compare it to diving. If I dive 30 feet, I can come up, okay. If I dive 200 feet on mixed air, it's going to take me a while to get back up. If I go inside a building 200 feet and my air runs out or I have a problem, I've got to come out of a lethal environment and it just takes longer. So commercial stuff is really starting to make us nervous. Even, even the closeness of the buildings and the difficulty of moving engines in and out of those. And our funding mechanism, as we talk about this district, and if we levy it as a mill levy, then the commercial gets, gets taxed incrementally with the value of that property. And I think we're, we're not tapping into that near as much as we should be as far as a commercial cost.
So we looked at households in the district. Do we have any idea of the number?
Number? We haven't done that analysis yet. And I think one of the things Wes wanted to talk about, I know we've talked to Zion's, what do they call it? Financing, public financing. So they, they do this all the time. They, they look at the value of property, they compare that with your needs, your service needs, and then they come up with what that cost would be for each area. So I can't say that I know that number right now.
I'm just trying to understand the numbers of who we serve, but yet the numbers of what we need to serve and come up with a basic mathematic idea of like, can we even begin to stand this, pass that on as a cost?
Yeah, and that's part of the analysis that's going on. I think that this process is, if we do it right, we're going to, we're going to be smart about it and we're going to analyze everything we're trying to do. If we rush in and just say, we need a number by the end of the year and we're going to apply a mill levy tax, I think that's, that's the wrong way to do it. We need to take the time to do the analysis, to project what our needs are, and then determine what that mill levy is accurately so that, so that we get it all in place one time.
So if we do a district, have we even looked at, did we lose some fire department buildings that we've had and we'd have to build more if we're a district to have a headquarters? Or do we know on that?
It's, again, that's all part of the analysis. As we separate, one of the questions is who owns the equipment? Who owns the buildings? You know, the cities have built their own fire stations. Does the district lease those cities? Do they do it for a dollar for 20 years? Or do they rebuild some of those buildings? Because we know Paradise and Newton are completely unacceptable as a fire station. They're brick schoolhouses that were disused in the 40s. So they're not good enough to have school in, in 1940 and now where you've got fire stations there for the next 60 years. And it's, it, it makes no sense. And that the cities themselves either don't have the funding or won't spend the money to, to upgrade that. Some cities do, some don't. But when you start to look at it as a system, is that the right place for a station? Or do we need one station where we have three? You know, it's, there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done to get the right number.
A lot of those towns have done amazing with what they have.
They really have.
Yeah, it's, it's, you gotta, we, you know, we really have to commend them for what they've been able to just do bare bones and with a lot of volunteer.
Yeah, and if you look at the volunteers, this is the one that always amazes me is why anybody would be a volunteer firefighter. I mean, we're all a little bit weird in the head. But who else, who else in your community is going to go to trade school for up to 300 hours for seven months, three nights a week, just for the opportunity of leaving your family at a moment's notice and having a commitment at least once a week to go to a drill? You know, it's, it's just an insane amount of commitment to your community to do that kind of thing. And it's great. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm more than proud of their service and we do the best we can to train them so that it matches their schedules. They're great to work with. We have, I teach all over the state. I teach fire tactics throughout all of Utah. And hands down, Cache County has some of the best trained firefighters in the state. They're, they're all certified. They all do their annual tests as far as SCBA fit tests and a lot of annoying things that we make them go through. But, but they do it and they, they really do a good job. And we don't want to lose that. This, this whole district thing, we'd be crazy to lose the effectiveness and the cost effectiveness of the volunteers. So we want to make sure we keep that in place.
Rod, have they, have you guys emphasized to them or do the volunteers know about the medical insurance program that UAC has put forth to, to help them be able to do the, the volunteer job?
Yeah, we've, we've gotten that information out to all the chiefs. We talk about it in state chiefs meetings. We've talked about it in our county chiefs meeting. It's, it's really, it seems to be underutilized for what's been funded. And I'm not sure why that is.
Less farmers out there looking for a medical insurance while they volunteer for?
Yeah, and maybe that's still the deal is it takes too much effort to be a volunteer for the pay of a health insurance. Frankly, my exit plan is when I leave here, I'm going to go volunteer for Lewiston so I can get the state insurance until I'm 65. So.
That's not a good exit plan. You have to stay and get medicated.
Making him twitchy. So, no, that, that, that is a good plan. It's a good program and they've expanded it this year to include dental and eye. And so it's really a full-blown medical plan that your family can get on. It's, it's a great benefit. So.
Are we seeing age disproportion to our volunteers versus younger?
Way older. I did some research when I was working on my master's degree. So it was probably 2010? No. How old am I? 2010, yeah. I did some fitness levels of volunteer firefighters and one of the things I collected was age. And the average age was around late 30s, 38, 39. We're probably at the 45-ish range now. So our volunteers are getting older. And I know as we get older, we're much less effective on the fire ground. They pretty much let me sit in the truck and talk on the radio now instead of actually running into the building, dragging a hose, which is, I'm fine with.
We're finding less and less self-employed people out there that are able to. I mean, you go back 20 years and look at Wellsville's fire department, it was all those who were self-employed.
And interesting, Wellsville is one of the strongest daytime stations we have. But when I started in Lewiston, almost 30 years ago, we had the guy that managed the bank was on the department, the grocer was on the department. All the farmers around were on the department. And the siren would sound and they'd run to the station and get the engine and they'd go put out the fire. They didn't have to have all the training and the certification. They didn't have to have the $4,000 set of turnouts for each person or the $8,000 SCBAs. And fires have changed in the last 30 years. The fuel loads are different. All the synthetic materials make those fires burn so much hotter and faster that we reach flashover, which means everything in the room is burning at the same time in three and a half to four minutes. And under old fuel loads, it would be 20 to 30 minutes. So about the time we're leaving the station, the entire room that's on fire is, is fully involved and we have to go in and, and deal with that kind of stuff. It's a, it's a different animal now than it used to be.
So how do we look at growth in the county as well as providing that fire protection? Because isn't there a mandated response time or wanted response time to a fire with certain areas of the county?
Yeah, NFPA standards, National Fire Protection Association standards, the numbers are 1710 and 1720, if you want some late night reading. They mandate typically a four-minute response time for a career department. So when people are in the station, they should be at the fire in four minutes. The volunteer side, the, the number's actually 20 minutes. But we know what a fire looks like after it's been burning for 20 minutes. I've done some mapping on response times and, and station location. If we have, I think we could hit six minutes, Smithfield to Hiram, if we added a station in Nibley and we added one kind of in the Hyde Park area. We'll never get to four to six minutes in the small towns just because it, it doesn't make sense to have people sitting idly for years waiting for a fire. But we need to, we need to look at, again, we need to look at where we are, where we should be right now, where the stations need to be, and then project growth and where should we put those stations in the future? A lot of the big cities, a lot of departments look at those and they say, okay, in five years, we're going to put a station here. In 10 years, we're going to have another one over here. And I've seen cities actually build the station before the, the growth happens, but their master plan has those in there. We're, we're going to be in the same position we are with the roads in that we're going to have development without the stations where they need to be because the land's either going to cost too much or it's unavailable and we'll have to put the station in a, a less than adequate location just because it's available. And that's going to lead to a longer response time unless, unless we do it as we go. And we haven't done it as we've gone. Each city's tried to do their own thing or pay somebody else to do it. And we've gone past the deadline of trying to get that in line.
So backing up a little with the Zion's make public finance study, we're, we haven't anything to start that.
No, we, we haven't.
We have to appropriate.
Right. We've, we've talked to them just to kind of understand what it is. They gave us kind of a ballpark. We just said, you know, what's a ballpark? How much does it cost to do a financial study like this? And they said between $25,000 and $30,000. It's not something that, I don't know that we have the in-house capability of doing that. And I personally would feel more comfortable having professionals determine what a mill levy is going to be.
They take all the assets that are held by each of the cities and the county's assets and they put that out to show, you know, what, how much each municipality is in it so far? And then how to make that fair, like how would we assess going forward for each of those areas? I'm like, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Like the equality of like how that would be.
Yeah, and the question there is, is it, do you have the ability to differentially assess the level of taxation? Like within a city and the unincorporated, say Scare Canyon? You know, is that going to be taxed at the same rate as Hyde Park? And I don't know how that works, so.
Would some of the cities have the option to opt out of the fire district? Or is it the way it's put together that is not even dual?
Yeah, the positive side as far as moving forward with the district is it exists. It was established legally. We've gone through all that with our attorneys. So the fire district exists. The, the venue to get out is to have a referendum on the ballot and the city has to elect or vote to withdraw from the district. And the number has to be 50% of the number of people who vote for the governor in that race. Now the state law's written. So there, there is a mechanism. And we've talked about that in the meetings with the, with the mayors. We said, you know, this is the get-out, this is how you do that. We would like everybody to stay in. I think we work, you know, I, I've always said, at the operational level, when you're on the fire ground, we all work great together, which is not all that common. We don't have departments that don't like other departments. What I see is, yeah, come on in, help us. When we get to the, the financial and the, and the elected level, maybe there's a little bit of defensiveness in that they want to make sure that their city's taken care of. And if you essentially abdicate that to a county-wide agency like a fire district, then there's a little, maybe some discomfort of, am I going to get the service that I currently have? And I, I would hope that in our planning and our financing, we, we provide the service at a minimum at the current level and, and hopefully at a, a higher level because we're too low right now.
Just, just to clar, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to ask, trying to clarify then. Fire district overall, you said there were basically 10 stations?
Yes.
So is Logan City part of the fire district? Or are they an independent entity already?
Logan City was never part of the fire district. So the district boundaries are everything within Cache County excluding the city limits of Logan City.
Okay.
So it's, it's its own. And, and this is again, part of why we're talking about this. If we're funding the fire service out of the general fund, then we're funding it with tax dollars from Logan City. And Logan City's already generating their own city municipal taxes to pay for a $14 to $16 million fire service. They're saying, well, we're paying, the number I keep hearing is 47% of the county general fund. So we're paying 47% of the county's fire budget, but we already pay for our own fire budget. Why are we doing that twice? And the district mill levy and funding would eliminate that. At the same time, it would say, now we don't have that revenue service or source, so it's got to come from somewhere else.
So going back to the question of the Zion's make public finance study, so would it take into account what the residents of each municipality are already paying for their fire service to their municipality?
The ones, the examples that I've seen would. I, I read one where Payson and Santaquin were looking at combining and they looked at the per capita cost for each of those cities and one was going to go up and one was going to come down. There's, there's just, there's definitely some inequity between what each city's paying. And, and I don't know how to resolve that other than to say, but the service is coming from everywhere, not just within that one city.
That's, that's kind of been the, you know, the, the most important thing is that even when Logan has needed county help to come in and help with them with fires, they do. Counties needed, other cities have needed Logan. They, you know, there's just seems to be a, so basically whatever the money is, the money stream, where it comes from and everything, the service pretty well covers everybody in the county.
Right.
And I think that's what's critical to, to maintain. I hate to, I hate to start drawing these barricades saying, oh, we will fight the fire. We can't go across the street. You know, I hate, I, I just hope we don't get to that, you know, detrimental effect of saying, hey, this is a, this is where our, our total limits are and we become so divisive with each other because of what you pay and what they pay.
Yeah, and that's, that's really unacceptable. I mean, that's not good for public service and it's terrible for the morale of fire departments.
Exactly.
And frankly, I, I wouldn't put up with it. I wouldn't work for an agency that said, you can't respond across the street because they're not in our district or something. It's, I've seen it happen in the South where it was a subscription base and the departments would stop and they'd say, you haven't paid your fire fee, so we're not putting out your fire. And then it's a riot and the engine gets tipped over and lots of bad things happen. So it's.
So as we talk about the fire district, does that change anything with our emergency services such as ambulances, EMTs or anything else? Does that have any impact there?
It, it fits into the equation. So one of the things we're trying to do right now is not change any of the individual departments. They're not going to be answering to us. It's more, right now, we're looking at financial, who pays for it? So if, so if Smithfield is part of it, we would say, what's your budget, Smithfield? How much do you need? This analysis would help with that and the board would decide. And then you'd, you'd offset that by the revenue that they're bringing in from the ambulance service. Ambulance is, is, has totally different rules, totally different laws on how it's mandated. It's protected service areas, so we can't just say, oh, the district's taking over your ambulance service. That, that's entirely up to Smithfield and it's entirely licensed to Smithfield. So.
The reason I ask that is because we've said on our. The reason I ask that is because we've said on ARPA funding, there's money for an ambulance.
Mm-hmm.
Should we be looking at if we have any extra ARPA money? And I guess it cannot. That's why we've only financed ambulance, but can it go to a fire truck or anything else?
Interesting you bring that question up. I think Alma's gonna talk about that a little bit, but we have, so we were allocated a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to finalize a purchase of the ambulance. We can totally finance that ambulance with ARPA money, and then use the money that's been appropriated for the ambulance and put it on the fire side to pay for the engine, using the county money, and then use the ARPA money to pay for the whole. Ambulance. So that's a way to use some, some more ARPA money to meet their rules and still fund it under that.
So basically, if we take the time to do this correctly, we're not gonna be in place to do the twenty-twenty-five budget for this, to do a levy. It would be the twenty-twenty-six budget. So where does that put us for the twenty-twenty-five budget, so that we are, are we still just gonna do it the way we have been from the general fund? Or do we need to make any kind of changes to that budget as we do twenty-twenty-five?
That's not a discussion for me.
Okay.
My, my opinion is, yes, twenty-twenty-six. If we do it right, and we ease into it and get all the numbers right, and, and the projections and the planning right, then set the mill levy for the twenty-twenty-six budget, the separation of the agency from the county at the beginning of January twenty-twenty-six. So with regards to how we fund next year, the only other option, I guess, is to do it like we currently are.
I can speak a little bit to that as well. Wes mentioned this, I think it was Appropriations Committee last week, Sandy. One, one potential first step would be to create a new county fund. Right now, the fire district, well, there's two. There's fire department, and there's fire district. And one of them is its own fund. The other is.
Yeah, actually, there's three, but.
There's three, okay.
There's municipal services fund that we use to pay contracts to the other cities to cover the incorporated area. Then our, there's our fire budget, and then there's our ambulance budget. And we've kept those separate because the ambulance is just on the south end, and fire's countywide, so we've tried to break them up. It's not a really good clean break, but there are those three budgets.
Your main fire budget is the general fund.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think what Wes's idea was is to move that into its own fund. The fund would still, for twenty-twenty-five, be funded by general fund dollars, but it would just kind of be a first step where we have a fund that will eventually turn into the fire district's budget, and it would be completely separated from the county. But for twenty-twenty-five, it's just its own fund.
Yeah, he was gonna talk about that tonight, wasn't he?
That's one of the things he was.
Yeah.
Rod, you keep saying, you know, or it's been said that volunteers, and it's hard to get volunteers if we go along with this and we build these extra stations. Do you see a problem in getting people to man those, or, you know, how will that work?
I, I think in the long term, especially if, if they're like in the Nibley area, the Hyde Park area, they need to be full-time people. We hire, so my staff right now, we have, at the station, we have three full-time people per shift, so that's nine people. I have six part-time people to make up that fourth position, so that's fifteen. And then I have forty-two part-time paid-on-call to cover Mendon and Wellsville, just, just to have people to show up. We have two positions in, in Richmond. If it was filled with full-time people, it would be two people. If it was filled with part-time people, we could do it with six, because you can only work so many hours a week. I have ten, just to try to fill the schedule, and I still have problems filling it. So part-time is a cost-effective solution when we can find the people to do it. Firefighters like to work a twenty-four-hour shift or a forty-eight-hour shift, so to ask them to work a forty-hour shift, nobody wants that job. They would much rather work a twelve-hour, you know, every, every fourth, well, these guys, the part-timers I have down at the ambulance station, they work a twenty-four-hour shift. They, they work for Logan, or they work for another agency, but they just pick up an extra twenty-four-hour shift every sixth day to augment their income. And it's, it's cost-effective for us, but it's, it's difficult to schedule and hire, and, you know, then you gotta have turnouts for each one of them. Again, thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars apiece, 'cause it has to be sized to the individual. They only last ten years, so every ten years, they have to be replaced. Masks and a lot of individual costs, uniforms, that get expensive because of the number of people you have. Doesn't match the cost of a full-time employee by any means, but it still gets to be difficult to supervise.
So you said Wellsville, Mendon, how do you cover Petersburg, Trenton?
Well, I mean, you keep the, the volunteer departments. Trenton has a volunteer, Mendon has a volunteer. They cover Petersburg. But if you, if you staff the full-time stations a little heavier than they require, then you've got plenty of people to go. Like, if you go from Richmond to Trenton, there's three fire stations on that road. Richmond, Trenton, and Clarkston are all on the same road. You can, you can staff Richmond, which has a higher call volume, and then shoot them out to Trenton or Clarkston in a straight line. And that, that makes up the difference when they're not there during the day, or when there's problems on the weekend when nobody's around. So strengthening the core of full-time gives you the people to go out and cover the others. You know, it's, you wouldn't, you wouldn't believe how ragged we are as far as being able to cover everything we need to cover. Smithfield has six people on staff during, during any given shift. That's, that's either two ambulances, or it's an engine and an ambulance. So if there's a call in Lewiston, and there's a fire in Smithfield, they're out. They have one engine that's gonna show up. And it takes a minimum, NFPA standard again, you're talking seventeen people just on the first fire alarm, to do it safely. We teach tactics statewide for these small departments, where we're attacking the fire with four people, and that's mainly just to get it stopped or, or slowed down enough for more resources to get there. But you look at a place like Logan, which is not a large city, it's fifty-something thousand people. They've got four stations essentially they're operating. If you add in the population of North Logan and Providence, so you're, call it sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand people out of four stations, and then four career stations, so they have a structured fire, they've got four people at each station, then they've got the number of people they need to, and they pull in usually one or two engines from the county. A lot of the problem is, is just call volume, too. You know, we don't have fires every day. That's good. But you have to pay people to be ready every day. You know, and what is the model? How many is enough? How many, what's the right number? Well, the right number is to have a fire engine in front of every house, 'cause if the house catches on fire, then that's best, right? Well, obviously, we're not gonna do that. So how far back do you dial that back and say, well, we can handle one fire at a time in the, in the county, or, and then how long does it take to get there? Or we can handle two fires in the county at one time. How long does it take to get there? And that's a service model that, you know, we can, we can run the numbers. That's, that's not hard to do. We can put all those numbers together. And then we look at the costs and say, what, what's it cost, and then how much are we willing to, to fund versus service? And I can say, if we, if we pay this much, then this much of the county will have a six-minute response time, and the rest of the county will have a ten-minute response or a fifteen-minute response. Or we can pay less, and this much of the county will have a ten-minute response time, and then the rest of it will have a twenty. Or if we have multiple ambulance calls, then you can have three ambulances called out at once, or somebody's gonna have to wait. Or they're gonna have to wait for one to come from Logan. And I can promise you, doing CPR on somebody for thirty minutes, waiting for an ambulance from Logan is a long time. Really a long time. So I think where we go is, let's look at where we're at, let's look at where we should be right now, and then let's look at where we're gonna be in three to five years, and then I can tell you what the cost of that is gonna be. And then you or the fire board will decide what we're willing to pay for. 'Cause you guys, I've said it before, and you hate it when I say this, you guys determine level of service.
That can be going on. That, those studies, all that stuff, as we're looking into that, that can all be going on while we're getting the bylaws put together, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So they've gotta, we just, we really need to.
Yeah, we're.
Have something to base ourselves on.
Yep.
Before we jump too far ahead and find out, hey, you know, we gotta go back to ground zero and start with the basis on things. We need to really start getting those things taken care of.
Yep.
We get the ask for the, the study.
I don't know if he put it into this budget opening. Do you? I don't think it's in here, so it would be September, the next budget opening in September.
Maybe twenty thousand.
Yeah, it's not in this budget opening. The council was really communicating and putting it in, but I don't think we have.
No, we'd have just a token number. We wouldn't have a good idea.
Yeah, we wouldn't have. We wouldn't have an RFP.
Let's, we've had a few of these where we just throw an arbitrary number. Let's find out what it's gonna cost before we pull it into a budget.
That was, that was the arbitrary number from Zion, so. Yeah.
Okay.
There's, there's a lot of work to do, and I think it can happen. I mean, I, I don't like paying outside people to do studies, 'cause I think we, well, a friend of mine said, it's kind of like giving somebody your watch and then asking them what time it is. Now, we know, we know how to calculate this stuff. I could go into another county and do a study for them and say, this is, these are the numbers. This is how you calculate it. I think we've got the skill on the, the fire response and the ambulance stuff. The financial stuff, I'm, I wouldn't claim to be a financial analyst, and so I'd rather see somebody else do that, but we can, we can get going on a lot of that stuff.
It's really, and I've worked with them before. They can create really cool things that says, okay, based on this information and these response times, this is how it would be. And I mean, anybody could do it if they just had expertise, but based on this scenario, you know, they create the model based on that, and they can build it out based on a lot of different scenarios, based on our response times and stations, and then whatever we'd like to, you know, give them as far as the.
Yeah.
As the scenarios, and it's, it's really visual and helpful like that.
And the magic, the magic to all of it is, what level of risk are we willing to take?
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's, you gotta match what we can afford.
Mm-hmm.
And which then matches the risk that we have to basically accept. You know, yeah, we can tax to the hilt, and we could have, you know, everything in the book, but people, people, you know, they will fight back on things like that. So there's, there's always a balance. But, but it's never a balance, I guess you'd say. It's, there's always something that we find that we can do our best, and that's it.
Yeah. You know, when we talk about stations, you know, when we talk about financing stations, I don't think it's necessary to fund a station like Logan just built, with lots of glass and nice doors and all that. I've done steel buildings with roll-up doors and out of volunteer stations, and they work just fine. We don't need to spend millions of dollars to build edifices to public safety, if you wanna call it that, when we just need something functional. Steel building, three bays, two dual doors on both sides, a classroom, some living quarters. Doesn't have to be anything fancy. So I think that's.
Well, and many times, you've come back to us and say, you know, we can get another year out of this engine.
Yeah.
We can, you know, we can, and we've been able to buy some, a little bit of time.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that we'll figure it out, but it won't be perfect.
No, never is.
Never is.
How soon could we get an estimate from Zion, Zion, find, public finance of what it would cost to do the study that we want them to do?
Uh, we, we just need to write the RFP, so they know exactly what they're going to do. That scope of the study, and I think we could have that definitely done in the next couple of months, so that at the next budget opening, we'd have a good number.
So, and this might not be the right question for you, or, or maybe it is, but in this twenty-twenty-five budget, we're just treating it as a department?
Mm-hmm. That's, that's how I've been putting it together so far. I, I wrote it exactly like we did last year.
Other questions? This is one of those things, is you have questions, it'll create more questions.
Yeah.
You got my number. If you got input, I'd love to hear it, too.
I have input. I'll figure it out until this is all done.
Yeah.
I already told them we could.
I get that a lot lately. Jason's in behind me all the way.
Is that a form of an ordinance or?
We have a motion.
And by the way, no public hearing on that one.
Yeah.
Anybody got an INA, an INA URS?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in serious. Thank you very much. We got some time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got some food in there. I would like some lunch. I haven't eaten lunch. Okay, let's go in there and get some Bittles.